After seven, let's get started because we have a closed session to get to later on tonight and that could be long or short. We'll start with Chief.
What is the, it has to do with Chief, the Lindsay, a memo of Lindsay's people who live tonight and I want to share that with everybody. And the other thing is just the water point, both hands, I heard something, but I don't know if I can check on that.
All right, Chief, you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor Council, thank you for having me this evening. Sorry for the little bit of a delay. My sergeant was out of town on the mission tour and set us back a little bit on my steps. As you can see here on March eighth, we responded to seven hundred block here in the town of Allen. A person lying on the road. Officer found on Mr. Ryan, who's responsible for the bottom of his layers. And this is when we did, he was in our town, you know, on Ballack Street when that man was found unconscious and unresponsive. He was taken to the hospital. We've been in communication with his daughter, he's doing fine, but I agree with that. It seems to be going much better. Community events, we still are continuing our visits with the, I don't know if you heard it from lunch. We visited the three school students and staff that we got stuck really high in that church. We attended a meeting group where the mayor was there and a number of other people like Scott Flippel and Andrew on March the twentieth. Topic of discussion is community resources for Southern Allen on the Scott Flippel period. On March thirty one, we had an opportunity to visit with the kids at the Boys and Girls Club and show them our new UAB. I think there were pictures of them saying, oh, you're able to take children at the county's back. The John Ball, they're not so bad, we're bringing that UAB. That's our stove and the guest at the community meeting room. And then we had the pictures of them doing that. There's the kids, they were fascinated by that drone flying in the air. So that drone has the ability to be able to take video and there's a picture that John took with the drone flying over the bridge. So he got sort of our last Thursday, so the UAB operator, he kept that in our toolbox now. And he was retroverted with all of the FAA requirements, requirements that they require, so. That's good. In light of the most recent smoke incidents, the DPO president, Mr. Morris, enlightened us along a basic moving and moving parent. To the elementary school with a really hot and discussed school safety there. So that continuing a theme that will be working with the school, the principal and the county. I did send Officer Wood to the alert act, for the shooter training, the last little program. The way, so now he's a trainer fan, he's going to bring that training back and give refreshers and train more that. The most current best practices and addressing those type of threats in our schools. You can see that the authority officers have donated about seventy three and a half hours, seventy three, five hours of their time to the town this past month. Department of Food, four more meetings, there was a tape. Met with Chief Lance Stapp and Chief Courage Lee regarding the town emergency operations plan. Ms. Moss, did you get that information on whether those plans was out here at town hall?
I, I had a booklet, I didn't see this, that they're applying.
Okay. Maybe you and I can hit the other one, one day, hobby that actually helped me locate them both in the office over here.
The part of the make, make, make.
That was the dam, and then there's another one, there's the town's emergency operations plan. And then the town has their own separate, which goes to revise and fill it up.
Okay.
Officers sent them to pursue below one hundred trains with the Allen County PD's, the local county police department.
Chief, just ask him if they're. Who is that, by the way?
Sir.
What is, what is that?
Below one hundred, yeah. So.
Somebody not informed, let me make sure.
We have pursued in the town, um, probably two months ago and out of that pursuit, there were some things that I thought we could do a little better on. So Allen County was doing some annual pursuit training. I sent them over with, the officers over with Allen County PD. Do, I can take their cars over and do pursuit driving. And then in the low one hundred, actually it's classroom and it actually teaches the officers the consequences and the decision making process. Uh, we should, uh, you know, it's their responsibility to make that purchase, you know, whether or not the two would be able, why are you doing it? Some of the consequences that can happen if two goes wrong, those type of things. So that's what that training was about.
Thank you, thank you for the explanation and thank you for the goal.
Um, we had, uh, armed qualification this past month, so all of our officers are qualified for the year. Town attorney, they're sending a copy of an email that came from the DOJ. That, that matter has been resolved and then we will refer to action of that, that investigation. The fully executed CIPH program, MOU TVA, has been signed and is now in place. I told you about also going certified and also goods completing with alert training. There was one question I had raised for, was raised and I wanted to talk with Council about. Officer training, re-interviewing interrogation school, it's a, it's a, it's a. It's a school that teaches officers how to. When they're conducting an criminal investigation, whether it's misdemeanor or felony, teaches an officer about the investigation, but also how to develop a theme and an approach, a plan. To interview or conduct an interrogation of an individual interest or suspect. And question was brought up, this training is held at the academy, but it's four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, as whether officer training is a question they're spending on our part. And I, I didn't feel that it was a question they're trying or spending, I felt like that's part of our budget, officer to be trained. I thought we had the money and the budget to go ahead and spend it and send them to, and I wanted to make sure I was cleared in my own council without us.
I trust your judgment, you said it was budgeted?
Well, it's in my, it's my, in my career development.
No question. Then there.
I appreciate you that you bring it to our attention and so, as you seem fit and so, but otherwise, please support what you're doing. And again, you've done incredibly well, somebody that requires for the town.
Thank you. Okay. Pretty full review for all services, everyone can see, we did dispatch to four hundred and eighty four calls for service just in the first thirty months of this year. This past month, a hundred and one call for servicing the town itself. We done a hundred and twenty four traffic stops. Sixty seven warnings and fifty seven side patients. Total arrests for this past month, a story of arrests of six. And then I've got a breakdown of calls for service for the past three year comparison. And then you see the total call for service, the last three lines at the home. So calls for service definitely have increased for the town over the past couple of years. And then Mr. Morris, you had asked about the, the call types for the police department. And I went through the number of things of call for service and just highlighted the most frequent call for service. Assist agency, warrant services, escort and traffic report, sufficient activities, law enforcement, phone messages, non-impairment, hangups. Assistations, um, those are just a small list of some of the calls for service that we did respond to the past month. And I'll make sure that I can add that to the work in each month.
That would be great. And just, just for everybody, one, one reason I asked for this is because I think it'd be good for us to keep an eye on. The activity and if we're going to have to plan in the future to add additional staff or things like that, things that we need to think about. Um, to help our Scott Flippel Police Department.
Question.
Which line, which line, which line is the citation? More serious than a picture? That was, you need to think about that.
Mornings.
Mornings, don't do it again, citation costs too many.
That's right.
End points. Okay, thank you, Chief, appreciate all you're doing. We had a, because school was out this past week, the chamber met on the last Wednesday of March, rather than our first Wednesday of April, as we had planned. Those number of the members have children in school and they, I would be unable to attend. Just had a training, the gentleman that set up the new website for the chamber. Gave free training sessions on how you can get into your particular little niche in that and customize it to fit your own needs and desires. So it was pretty interesting. Um, and that was about all we did, we made about three hundred and fifty dollars on the yard sale for the chamber. And it was a really nasty day to have a yard sale, but we still made about three hundred and fifty dollars on that. And I don't know of anything else that we, it was not a real long meeting. Um, Mr. Brissette, you have anything on ARB?
To the best of my knowledge, they did not meet on Thursday. Um, I do have to get in contact with Aaron though and kind of get on whatever text list or. We haven't really worked out the bugs yet as far as when meeting times are and stuff like that. To my knowledge, it's the first Thursday of every month, but I don't believe they met.
No, we had multiple travel and schedule conflicts last week, so, and no new business.
I don't feel bad.
You did not miss any.
All right, but other than that, I don't think there's.
Thank you to you that I found out today that the library has purchased a pergola. You know what that is?
Yes.
Um, to place in the side yard, I guess it would be the west side yard of, uh. And they are unaware that they need to get ARB's approval on this, so I will contact them tomorrow and tell them before they put this thing together to get in touch with.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Save you a call you have to make, okay? But they have done some really nice remodeling on the interior of the library, so.
I'll have to check.
Uh, Mr. Briscoe, anything on last planning commission deal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a number of things. Uh, one of that was our fellow town councilor came and presented the strategic plan, the planning mission, and it was really. warmly received by the planning commission and we talked about some scheduling dates, which I think you'll talk about tonight. So there was some scheduling, I'll get the dates, I'll get into the date, so that was a very helpful presentation. There was a conversation about attendance of planning commissioners, a little bit of research related to that issue, but related to. And there was also discussion how it relates to us. There was also a planning commissioner who was expressing some thoughts related to different people who need, um. Uh, different issues in the meeting. We took some comments from some citizens who explained ideas they have for the town, which is available to all of us here. Talk about various ways of following condition where the town could look at. Future ways to help the town deal with really vulnerable issues. We focused on a comp plan. Again, at this particular time is about safety in sidewalks and one of the things we talked about in safety in sidewalks is. Is there a way to maybe change the culture around here in terms of what we do that would increase the safety? If you're, no, we talked about it in planning, you mean, if you're, for example, near the university, there was that understanding that people are instructed to take their time crossing the street and that's not so much. So we'll talk about various ways to decide lots of also. Uh, maybe flashing lights and cheese, I might be going to include that. Your input in the future would be good to talk about ways that we can make it safer, but this is from the bigger issue of the conference of funding. We also talked about the East Village, again, we've talked about it here also, we talked about the site plan and. There was some discussion in the meeting about would we as a town want to come up with ideas that would. Maybe be interested to by the owners of the property, what would we do to. Enhance the trails that go through there to enhance the park plan, so there was a conversation about that and. There's, there was a willingness of the planning commission to talk to the council about that, so what would we group together to think about ways that we might improve this? From a park perspective or from a trail perspective, so that's also something we probably could talk about in the strategic plan. They should know that, that would be good. And then one other thing would be, there was a conversation, into Mr. Quick, about a. Uh, property, a popular brand, which is a special use, and he had an idea of maybe having a cabin type structure up there that would be a. Place where people could come and stay on short term and. I mentioned, I mentioned on a personal lot, I spent some time in West Virginia where those type of cabins are very common and people do that and. So there was a conversation and he was really asking, trying to commission their thoughts about that, is that something that we would be interested in or not? And we explained that it's a, it's on a block overlooking the James River, which I had a lot of my, we're, and they can definitely compel to, to be able to come and stay there and also addressing the issue of. We're not having a presence stay of four turns, so that was an interesting conversation, so we'll hope that he comes back with further thoughts about that. Any other questions, imagine anything on this? Yeah, I was, we can, was this one? Well, it's an idea, his thought is that he would want approval for three, but he might want in at a time. Yeah, that's correct, but so there could be, he would want to get approval for three essentially, and it's kind of a logical idea, but if he did, he might be one. Those are the, those, those weren't, what else were they? There, I think it was Airbnb, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the application is for tourist lodgings.
Who is, oh, there's. And again, this is a very, you know.
They're really nice.
Yeah, that's been just one of the. Of the same thing, yeah, there would be a number of fingers of town that are involved, and that was, and that was interesting. And it was helpful, I think everybody was faithful to the thought and it's still hypothetical, but the narrative was just a great group. Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, any more questions for Mr. Briscoe? Mr. Lawless. Give us a treasurer's report.
We are three quarters through the current fiscal year now, uh, that year halfway through in December and concludes in June. So at the same time that you're working on the budget development for the year that starts in July, we're also wrapping up the accounting and bookkeeping for the current year. Um, when you get your financial report for the month, look at the percentage totals as being around a seventy five percent target and you can see where are we on track, ahead or behind. The, um, the town total revenue and spending is right where it should be for this time of year. We're always in a position of playing a little bit of catch up at the tail end of our budget because of the tax laws that we use and the statutory deadlines that are in there. The business license revenues are coming in now. Um, the majority of that revenue is on time and there are a few delinquent accounts that we're pursuing. This is one of the top five town revenue sources, so it's, and it's a requirement for, um, for businesses almost everywhere in the state. So businesses know this, they've done it on time for many years now. Uh, but there, there is an issue of delinquency on a few of those accounts and a small number of businesses who are chronically late on it. It's, it's a bit of an eighty twenty rule where eighty percent of the revenue comes in, no problem. And a small number of the clients cause a large part of the enforcement headache. So I wanted to ask you kind of on concept, without naming any names here tonight, what's your, what's your feeling about? The enforcement approach on that and do you have any concerns about the public naming and shaming of delinquent accounts? If you had eighty businesses that were doing everything right and paying on time and five that were. Chronically ignoring these rules, does the public deserve to know that or ought we be more polite and discreet about our enforcement?
I would agree with you, I think.
There is a point in which.
Force it and, and take every step possible to get the money, but. Don't do something that might hurt their business and. I'm squatting maybe have one less business or buy one.
That's, that's certainly been our practice in the past, that, um, the notices on enforcement or, or pending legal action all go by certified mail. I, I never stop anyone on the street or in, or in public, um, that, uh, we've, we've given them that privacy and. Not asked about the reason why they're not following the law and paying us and the legal action only comes after extended enforcement activity. So we're happy to continue.
And are you finding you don't have the tools generally to, are, are they not listening or like?
Right, that's maybe my question.
Or do you have what you need?
Some, they, they will drag their feet for as long as six months or even into the next year, they just don't do it. Uh, we have brought, in five years here, we've brought one embezzlement case on unpaid meals tax revenue. That's what it is, you're holding money that doesn't belong to you, um, and we got as far as, um. Serving the felony charges. And at that point, they promptly got onto a payment plan with us, so we've never been in court around tax collections.
The one thing I might say, I might use this to the council, I've seen this for a long. The one thing I might say, I might use this to the council, I've seen this for a long time. We've kind of added Laura shaking her head to your members' conversations. For the council, so it's kind of an added blow because it's, there's an economic aspect, you know, like we'll have ups and downs. So businesses might be caught on one side or the other of the economics. The other side of it is sometimes. We've gone pretty far, even before your time, Mr. Mayor, I should you remember, sometimes we've had several private meetings to deal with the subject or so. I think it seems as though it's been good, I think the last couple of years, better than I remember, but. It's also been really difficult economic times the last couple of years. Yeah, they're very difficult. So I think the subject will be reflective of both economics and. Our practices and that's something too, probably the government services want to think about as we. Think of the future and our new administrator about how we continue to do this or what do we do in the future.
And, and you're right, and most of it goes smoothly, no problem.
But I also think it's not really fair to the businesses that do pay. And that we have to spend a lot of our time, you know, town time, which is money, trying to go after this. I think we need sort of a middle ground. I do agree that, you know, first couple of times be polite, but I think then there is a line in the sand that you have to cross because if you don't cross it. It's not going to get done, right? So I think we should, I don't know, I would ask everybody to think about what that line is. I mean, if people are coming good faith and saying, hey, listen, I'm gonna have it for a while, I'm just, you know, my business isn't doing well right now, hang on with me. I'm fine with that, but if people are just blatantly ignoring it.
Yeah, one place where I worked, we had a, and you don't have to have five letters, we had a series of five letters. You said the first nine, you got progressively stronger when, when the fifth letter hit.
Right.
And you didn't get a reply, you went.
Right, that's right. It has to be a process, right? And that process should be fair and equitable across the board, doesn't matter who it is. Five letters, three letters, whatever it is, then we're going to go pursue legal action.
At least you did a warning, then you did a citation.
The, the total business license revenue is in the order of eighty or ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, but just, the individuals in the twenty, so uh, one there.
The, the, the biggest, the biggest businesses, corporate, are usually okay because it's a central accounting office. It's your medium sized business, so we're collecting. We're struggling with a, a sum, maybe two thousand dollars.
And that's.
Oh, no, like your, your individual might be two thousand. The smallest one is a fifty dollar minimum.
Okay.
So you're, the range of cases that we're talking about, the smallest would be fifty, the largest would be two thousand or five thousand.
And why do you have the most trouble? The higher side or the lower side?
The, I, I think it's the medium ones, the, the. The one man show seems to do it on time pretty well, and the biggest ones do it on time really well because they have central accounting. It's that. To give them the benefit of the doubt, they've got a small number of employees, they're doing a lot of different things, they file their federal taxes on time probably, and then they don't do the town one.
Some of the ones in the past were much larger than that. All those kind of issues we dealt with were significant. All of the notes, but that, those, that's a small one compared to.
Okay. Good, well, I put some in context.
Yeah.
Anything else for Matt on the treasurer's report? The mayor's report is really uh, just to add that I made a visit to the Boys' Girls Club uh, this past week to make sure things were. Going well over there, which they are. Um, and attended the farmer's market opening and again, this past Saturday and tried to meet all the new vendors that I could. And uh, anytime I see somebody from out town, whether they're on a motorcycle getting gas or. Driving a big RV getting gas, uh, and I'm in the vicinity of where we're talking to them. Found out a guy this morning, he's heading out, uh, he's from North County, he's near one of my daughters, so and he knows. People that live where my other daughter works, so it's small world. Uh, did Mr. Bowley make it on, Mr. Bowley had a, a doctor's uh, physical appointment this afternoon. He didn't know what time he was going to get out of there, so. He was gonna zoom in if possible.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Any words that you'd like to pass on to us at this point?
I actually have a couple of things. One, uh, um, I've talked to a few of you about uh. Making the appropriations resolution uh, in better literary form, uh, which I've taken a stab at that. I think what you're gonna find, I think I told you this before, that the form of the ordinance that you're using is more or less the same used by. A, a large number of towns in some counties, uh. But one of the other things that I've been hearing from town council is that you want uh. Uh, certain items to come back to council, in particular capital improvements items in your budget, and also there was one uh. A community item that uh, at one of the work sessions I was present uh, at, that you talked about having that come back and make a final decision. So what I would do with the council's uh, approval is go forward and. Give you my two cents worth about what that would look like, if that's what you want me to do, in the form of the appropriations uh, resolution. That's the first thing.
Yeah, I think it'd be wise to uh, go ahead and get it cleaned up so that it uh, it covers what needs to be covered and then we will look at it and. See if we need to make any other adjustments.
All right, and I'll send, I'll send that out to council members uh, en masse. Uh, secondly, uh, you've got a, a FAR code. Um, and you've got an enforcement vehicle for that FAR code. And right now, the, the town code says that that enforcement vehicle is the town FAR marshal. However, um. Javier discovered that uh, at some point, Javier, are you present tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, when, when exactly, was that in the eighties or like, it was nineties, right?
Nineties, like late nineties?
Late nineties, uh, the town council, somebody got mad at the, at the county FAR marshal. And decided they did not want the FAR marshal and forcing the town code. And understand that for the building code, uh, rather than having a, a building official and having to pay the expense of having a building official, you use the. Services of the county building official. And you can do the same thing for the county FAR marshal, and that's what you've done in your ordinances, but. In the late nineties, council decided they didn't want to do that anymore, so they went to the alternative, which was a state FAR marshal. Uh, I, I think you're going to find that, that if you ever run into a situation where you're going to want. A governmental official to make a decision on, on a, a bill, an inspection involving the FAR code, it's like, it's gonna take less than four, five or six months. Uh, you're gonna need to do something other than have the state FAR marshal making that decision. Um, most recently for the, for example, when this arose with Matt and I, you had somebody that was interested in doing an A R B and B and uh. Uh, Matt said, well, I'll go out and, and do the inspection, but uh, uh, from a legal perspective, uh. That's fine and dandy until Matt does a FAR inspection, counts plugs and so forth, and it's grossly deficient in meeting the requirements of the FAR code and somebody dies or is seriously injured as a result of a FAR. Uh, I don't think you want your town administrator doing that, or ultimately the town council responsible for that. So I think at some point, town council is gonna have to revisit this issue and decide whether they want to. Stick with the FAR marshal, the state FAR marshal is presently uh, in ordinance form, or to go with what the old. Codified code says and, and have the county FAR marshal do it. And if you do the county FAR marshal and go back to that, you're gonna need to get county approval. Um, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, I had uh, ever since I've been on this body, I've been told that the Almarle County. Fire department guy was our fire marshal.
Well, that's what I thought too.
Yeah, uh, and. That came from not Matt, but it came from previous town administrator.
Well, that's what your, your codified code says. I mean, your, your county, your Scottsville code says, but uh. Uh, Javier, uh, materials that he showed me indicate pretty clearly that. Town council changed that back in the nineties to have the decision made by the state FAR marshal and. That's, that's really your present practice. You've been spared having to deal with this issue because you just haven't had that much need for inspections. Which is uh, in the last ten or fifteen years.
I think, I think that's, that's right. And in, in practice, the county staff have been real helpful, um, but. They've apparently been doing so on the basis of a favor and not on the basis of law. So if, if that works well, it might behoove us to. Recodify it. Whatever happened with the repeal twenty years ago is watered very far under the bridge.
Okay, you wanna get that ball rolling?
Some interest in restoring the old code?
Yeah.
Sure.
I think an easy way to do it, if that's what council wants to do, is to just keep the present um, codification, Matt.
Yes, that text worked perfectly well in nineteen ninety-five, and then we repealed it and got stuck.
And now we need to go back to the county and make sure that they're officially willing to do it.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm gonna.
Would that be the kind of thing we would want to talk to the supervisor to represent us to the county?
Uh, yes, I would think so.
And maybe we talk to the supervisor about it.
I'm gonna give you a, thirdly, I'm gonna give you a little more information on our Americans with Disabilities Act matter, which was resolved. Uh, in March, late in March, uh. Uh, and if you have any questions about that, just give me a call and I'll be happy, or send me an email and I'll be happy to try to explain further. I'm also gonna be sending you some materials on a re, very recent Virginia Supreme Court case, which uh. May have some effect on uh, Scottsville zoning matters.
Mr. Bowing? Uh, this is Dan, can I, could you give a one or two minute, when you just said about the changes on ADA, I, I would think it's one of our town councillors that would be interested in, maybe. She might even have a question for you too.
I, I, I've, that's one or two minutes on the Americans with Disabilities Act is a, is a misnomer. Uh, but that isn't what I'm gonna be talking about. You'll see it, it's what the chief referred to, and you'll see it when I send you the materials.
Okay.
That's acceptable to you.
That's fine.
Thank you. No, it's fine.
And if any council member has any questions about the Americans with Disabilities Act, please give me a call. And I'll try to, I'll try to answer it as best I can.
Any other questions for Mr. Bowling at this point? Hey, uh, Javier, you have a little voice?
Yeah, so um, I sent out an email just for a heads up to inform everybody that Commissioner Angivine's. Term ends uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So it's just to give you a heads up, so you have appropriate time for you guys to discuss interest in a reappointment. Um. Bill sent an email, but I thought it would be easier just to answer now and make sure everybody hears it, um, rather than sending it an email. Um, so I think you asked, would this uh, require a reappointment? Yes. Um, I think you would want to do it by uh, the end of the term, correct? And then, um, let's see, um, I had to ask Matt, when is usually our annual meeting?
They organize in July or August when they start their, their fiscal year.
And then, let's see, um, and then, uh, I think the last question was, uh, Eileen was gonna follow up. We spoke about uh, dates for a planning commission and town council meeting, if you wanna.
Well, do you want to cover those when we go over the council goals and strategies? Are we talking about?
Yeah, um, but that was all, I think that was the one thing I wanted to share, just to make sure everybody's on the same uh, page.
Okay, any questions for auditor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I forgot one thing. Uh, I have a court cases or court hearing scheduled for in the, in the circuit court of the county of Albemarle and also in the circuit court of the county of Flavanna. County of Albemarle this Wednesday and Flavanna on Monday about getting writs of elections. So that seems to be going halfway smoothly and I'll be in touch. That's for uh. Uh, the election for two council members who are involved uh, this November, November seventh, I think is the date.
That sounds good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Do we need to be in attendance, Mr. Bowling, for that?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. That's my burden and you're off the hook.
All right, the one thing I will say is when I talk to folks in Albemarle County. We have to, as far as I know, at least I do, I'm assuming you might too, anybody who has, is an appointee, not. Serving a fully elected term, has to let the county board of elections know by June. If you're going to be on the ballot or not.
Okay.
If you are on the ballot, or if you do not get elected, your term ends in November. So as soon as that election held and the results and that person comes into office, that person takes the seat. So the term does not go to January. Okay, for this situation only, right? And then, of course, then you have to go into the election for. The next to fulfill the rest of the. The term. So for me, if I were to. Do that and get elected in November, I would have to then. That I would have another election in another year.
Mm-hmm.
So.
If you're for two years, it's for a four year, right?
Yeah, I'm a four year, I think.
I don't, I don't know what mine.
It's given me, it's correct, you, it's the term that you took over.
That's right.
It's new, so it's a little confusing.
It's very confusing. But we have to let the board of elections know by June, we're going to be on the ballot in November.
Did you go to their offices to go out for one?
Okay. Item three, hey, council committee roles and assignments. There's been a lot of discussion lately about council committees and assignments to those committees. Uh, last week, um, Mr. Payne and I met up at the bank uh, to get the signature card straight, uh, now that he can sign a text. Uh, and Mr. Payne and I had a, had a nice discussion about committees. Um. Mr. Payne indicated to me that he is. Very thoughtful about our parks. Uh, about them being safe places and about them being, uh, reasons for people to come here. Um, if you look at their ordinances, a lot of our ordinances deal with this behavior in the parks. So I read this by him and we haven't had a chance to get together and discuss it further. But we talked also about uh. Mr. Heisen having some uh, thoughts on uh, spending uh, matters with Van Cleef and uh. I decided, why not come up with a new committee? We'll call it Parks and Public Safety. Mr. Payne and Mr. Heisen can handle parks and public safety. So what do we do about government services? I think Eileen would make a top notch government services, not that Mr. Heisen has not done a good job, but I think with her experience in government. Um, may be a better fit for her than something else, which at this point, there is nothing else. Mr. Brissette is, I think, happy with A R B. And uh, he can certainly handle the events calendar on the side, and I don't have any, any thoughts of asking him to do anything other than those two things. And for Meredith, Mr. Payne's wife has indicated that she is really interested in beautification.
Okay.
Taking, working with the, the planters and, and, and making the town pretty. And if you uh, talk to her, right, I think she would work on your committee and maybe even be your co-chairman, so that when you're tied up at work. Uh, and not able to attend to some things, you'll have somebody that will know what you need done.
Okay, so working on planners, it would be wonderful.
Yeah.
My thing is more than clean updates than per se and.
Right, if you have her, if you have Ms., yeah, if you have Ms. Payne as an assistant, you know, you're still your.
That wouldn't make any of those.
Yeah.
So she's willing to.
Well, we can always, you know.
Believe on that.
We don't have to always schedule these things on Saturdays. We can, we can get a, a group of volunteers together any day of the week and go around picking up trash. That's not a problem.
Okay.
You know, so.
Can, can, can I weigh in on this? We, we discussed the government services and I, and we'll take your considerations uh, about that, but uh, I wanna go to that.
About that, but, uh, I wanna go to that, and one of the things I'd like to say is, uh, you know. Under these reports, I mentioned this last week, there should be a report of the government service every, uh, book session and every, you know. Town council, it's just, we cover a lot of issues and it's hard to report on those unless, uh, agenda. For example, we, we're done doing a couple of the days, one is, uh, the budget and, uh, uh, website and, uh, I mentioned Lindsay Street. But I kinda wanted that to be part of the agenda, because government service is not, but, no, it should be. Yeah, it should be, but right under, uh, the planning mission. I just think that there's a lot of issues to be dealt with that are not reported, I'd rather report it here than, uh, or report it at the town council. But anyway, as far as the service committees, we, we discussed that several times and, uh. This is what, what was recommended from the, uh, government service. And, and I don't think we have to decide on who's gonna be on what committee today, but we wanted to. These were the couple of actions that, uh, we, we, the, the government service talked about last week. The town, any, any DA is on, and again, uh, it's, it's controversial or whatever. But the member would not be a voting member, it would just be a DA, so they wouldn't be, uh, they wouldn't have a vote on any committee because all these committees are advisory committees. That was one of the things. And then the other suggestion, uh, the government service had was should be three, three new committees. A financial committee, a parks and rec committee, kinda like what you're saying, and a web committee, which would be temporary, uh, with Eileen probably. Done the web, so those are some of the things we can talk about next week, we wanna add some committees. So then again, parks and rec, because we have a lot of parks, a web committee, which is that, and then a financial oversight committee, which I would like to be on. But, you know, I don't have to be on it, but I, I, I have many concerns with financial, uh, I don't know, of course, I've got a spending committee, I guess, spending committee. Uh, so if we're not in the same situation next to the budget because of, uh, you know, reckless spending. Or, uh, or, or actually say, hey, spending, they didn't have any oversight or unauthorized. So anyway, those are the three committees that we'd like to propose, uh, from the government service. And then, uh, next week, we can decide on who's gonna be the, we can have more than one DA, so we talked about having more than one DA. And I, I heard that you were interested in, uh, planning mission and I know, uh, Alex, I guess we need, they can officially, he's gonna be, uh. ARB, you know, but.
You know, ARB is set up by the zoning, uh, regulations.
Right, and we have to, we have to authorize that, it's kinda, that's what I have to.
The mayor appoints the committee chairman.
Who does?
The mayor.
Well, I think it needs to be, yeah, I think it should.
Not the way it works, and let me get you straight. If you have good reason.
Okay. But I would ask some of the other people.
Well, let me, let me, let me educate you to be here for just a bit, I know for some reason. You think that Dan should not be on, on, on the planning commission.
No, not necessarily.
Planning commission is not a committee, planning commission is a body that is set up by state statute. When I appoint somebody to planning commission as representative. They keep that position as long as they are serving their elected term, they run.
I think that should be changed.
Well, you have to go through the steps.
Be the one appointing, I think it should be town council who does this, this, that's too much power for one person.
We don't, we don't. Our, as a Dillon rules, we follow the state, we don't make our own rules on this.
As a board, this is said, you could, you could do that.
The planning commission. The planning commission.
Yeah, Mr. Ball, Mr. Bowling, is there?
I'm here, I can't understand everybody.
Our vice mayor has a question for you.
All right.
Okay, may expenses, he appoints people to commit. Councilman Dyke said, um, these committed people, you know, the volunteer to town services. Thank goodness. But we're trying to see who makes the choices. So can you, can you tell us, you know, if you council and mayor the role in committees?
Well, um, it's off the top of my head, so I reserve the right to correct myself, if that's okay with you, Mr. Payne. But, uh, under, under your procedures, as I understand them, the, the mayor has the authority and I think it's in the. I think it's in the, it could be in the town code, I can't remember ex- uh, precisely.
Okay, Jim, Jim, just stop, you're mumbling, you're not, you're not giving me any answers.
Well, no, I hadn't got.
Maybe this, you're thinking this, uh, assume this, get the answers, can you get back to us on that?
Well, I can, I can tell you right now, sir, if you just give me a chance. Is that acceptable?
I would prefer you tell us, Mr. Bowling.
Well, I mean, basically, you've got procedures in place where the mayor, and these are written procedures. That where the mayor is in charge of appointing members to the committees, okay?
And where are these procedures, sir?
Well, I, I think they're in your rules of.
You think?
Yes, sir, I told you it's off the top of my head, it's, I know I've seen them. And I know, I think it, but I'll let you know, I'll let you know tomorrow, okay?
Yes, sir, okay, thank you, no, no more.
So if he, if he, uh, appoint somebody in the town council that can, uh, question that or override that?
Yeah, well, I can, I can answer that too, the council always has the ultimate control and you can always override. It's the matter in which you do it is it's important or you have procedures to follow and so forth. In other words, if it's in your town code, you have to change the town code.
But, but what I understand though is, uh, that, that we would nominate people. And, and give second and, uh, vote on any committee, uh, or approve all the ones that, uh, are appointed. I guess it would be going the way, right?
Well, you'd have to, it's however you wanna do it, sir.
Yeah.
What does the law say, Jim?
Well, the law, the law gives discretion is what I'm trying to say, I, I think I said ultimately. If you, if you, if you want to have all the decisions made by the town council, you can enact proper procedures after you. Whatever, whatever they are, there's a different procedure for changing your rules of procedure versus changing your town code, all right?
Well, I'm talking about changing, I'm talking about adhering to what we have now.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, if you wanna change the way it is, from what it is now, where the mayor makes the decision, then you can do that, but you.
And what form, what form of government do you call that, Jim?
Well, I call that a democracy, sir.
No, 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 you call it a mayor council board government.
Well. Well, whatever, but, uh.
Whatever, because you've got a mayor council board government, or you have a council manager board government. I mean, these are in codes all over the world.
It's not quite that simple, Mr. Payne, because you've got a charter, you've got a charter that dictates exactly. The form of the Scottsville government, okay? I'll let you know. And I'd rather, I'd rather not, you know, I, I can, I just don't have the town code in front of me, just to.
For what, seventeen years, and you don't have a code in front of you?
I, I don't have the exact code section in front of me, no, sir, it just happened. Well, I, I'm, I, I plead guilty.
Well, we'll take a look at the code and say if you can send it to us, because I think there is, uh, a discussion or, uh, debate whether. Uh, authority lies, that kind of authority lies into the mayor or the, or as you said.
I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure right now the authority lies with the mayor. I, I'm pretty sure, I'm based upon what I looked at when, when it, you know, a couple of weeks ago. But, but that doesn't mean town council is, is, town council is the ultimate ruler of, of its codes and procedures, am I making sense?
Is, is there a reason we're talking about this? Obviously, there's been precedents that the mayor has appointed committee.
Okay, here's a big precedent. Nancy Gill appointed me to the planning commission, of which you were the head. I had a voting position as a council number on the planning commission, I voted for a planning commission question. Why is all of a sudden this, it's wrong for Dan to have a say?
Not wrong for Dan, we're in war, Alex, it's, it's, uh, it's been brought up that, uh, that. By being on a commission and a vote, you're having, uh, more power and ultimately two votes for anything. For example, uh, you know, if he, he voted for, or against something, then he comes to the town council and he's already. He can't really change his vote because he's already done it, so that was the idea that these are advisory committees and not committees that.
The planning commission is not a committee, it is a commission, it is established by state statute. And the only way you can remove a Dan is for malfeasance and excessive absences. Which neither he has to his. Can I just sit there and say, well, that's not the way it should be, it's in black and white in the state code?
See, I, I think that in the annual meeting, you're supposed to go with the, the council, those committees too, and that's.
Well, why did you not have a problem with me voting? When I was on your planning commission?
Oh, I did have a problem then.
Okay, well, why do you have a problem now?
Uh, because it got brought to, to my attention that this.
Did you not think this up on your own?
I've heard it from other people, from the public, that this is impartial, this is impartial, that they have somebody.
Planning commission makes recommendations, they do not make the final decision. You make the final decision, you make the final decision, you make the final decision, but the planning commission has to do something. They either send an item, they either send a question to the council, we approve that, we think this ought to be approved. Or we don't like this and we think it ought to be rejected, and then it's the town council's job. Take those thoughts and those different arguments and decide for themselves.
So what would be good to see what the, if there's another county or another town that has a good role of that?
It's okay to discuss this, I think everybody understands, without saying it's sick, you know. Well, so it's, so the state code. That says a pastor absolutely has to vote if he is on.
Vote if he doesn't want to.
If the pastor has, absolutely has voting rights. That, that's written in the state code.
I haven't read, the state code is ninety, ninety eight. In all of a sudden, after years and decades, okay?
They, that's an interesting point, we haven't thought of it before, it's not all of a sudden and it's not personal. It was something that was brought before some of the council members. In the years that I have been teaching preschool, I have not dealt with this many epic temperature challenges. It's out and done at this table. Mr. Ryan and Mr. Black, mayor, are the. We can, we can just stop there, it's nothing personal, nobody needs to be on the defensive. It's not that I'm gonna start allowing them to be attacked. It's something that was brought up and we would just like to discuss.
Well, what I'm trying to get across is that planning commission is not a committee.
I, I understand that.
And you're wanting all these other committees, if you read the definition of what government service is supposed to do. It includes everything that you want a separate committee for.
Well, yeah, that is seriously about the government service committee, and we have two hour meetings combined. And part of it is we wanna breath raise it up and we're doing that with the website, we wanna, we, we have some subcommittees with maintenance, we wanna.
Thank you, Mary.
Some of the other committees that we can't, we can't handle all these tasks and we meet every month, sometimes three times a month. So one of the things we wanna do is, uh, have some different kind of committees that would deal with some of these issues.
Gonna hand up these committee?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna.
We only have six people.
Well, okay, well, first of all, a liaison can be on two committees, they don't have to be on one. And they don't have to meet regularly, like you're on a committee and have you ever met, have you ever met the group economic development?
I am the committee.
I know.
Every day I look for new business.
But have you ever met at the committee?
I meet anytime I sit down and say hi.
What I'm saying is, uh, you could be part of those committees and you can have a committee of a member in your committee and have people actually attend the meetings. So, you know, the, the meeting we attend as a, as a government service, it's, it's phenomenal. Scottsville's a great team, we have, we have five good members and we, we cover everything and we go on and on and on. But we need to, we need to branch out and do some other things, we can only do so much. And these are, so I got, I got, this is our minutes, our minutes are longer than the town council minutes, these are three minutes, three pages of minutes. We cover town administrator candidates for the services committees, the website, maintenance, the budget, uh, and Lindsay Street. So the whole idea is maybe we have these committees, but some are doing a lot more than others. And, uh, and some of them have more power than others, and these are not my, these are not my recommendations, these are recommendations from the committee. And I think there's a really, uh, measured people on this committee that look at everything and have a broad thing, and this was about the service committee. And they were saying, you know, we need this committee, this committee, and this committee. And, uh, presenting that, we don't have to go with that, next week we can say, what do you think about having a committee like that? What do you think about, is anybody interested in being on that committee? Let's, let's nominate them, let's vote on it, that's all we're saying, and you can have a, a second one, we've talked about, we have, we have three in our committee. Eddie, Dean, and Eileen were on the committee, so we, you know, we can't meet because we got three. So we gotta break up and I'll be on those committees, I don't have any government service, I'll be on Eileen's committee or I'll be on, uh, Mayor's committee or Dan's committee. But, I mean, I think it's good to have two, like, like, Dan, like, uh, Eddie and I, because sometimes I can't attend and he can't, we got one person there. And it'd be good to have a backup all the time, that's my opinion, but these are discussion items for these committees and, uh, I think it's worthy. I, I don't think we have to get locked into how it's done, I think we should look at, uh, broadly, we should have done this at the, at the. At the meeting on, in January for the, uh, annual meeting, that's my feeling for that, but anyway.
Well, maybe, maybe we need to take a step back because we're getting into the weeds and figure out what's the problem we're trying to solve. And then what are the alternatives to how to solve them? I don't disagree with anything that's put forth as far as ideas go. But I think there has been precedence, right, for the mayor appointing, whether that's in the code or not, we can figure it out and establish. But I think the rest of what I'm hearing are process-based discussions, right, and sort of procedural. Does a committee chair have one liaison or could they have two? Would it be an alternate or a co-chair? These are all decisions, I don't think. I think what we need to do is sort of put a proposal on the table about what's broken. And something that we propose that would fix whatever we think is broken, rather than just trying to sort of spot.
I would be fine with especially, uh, just committees, because we did that with the, uh, enemy a little bit, we never covered committees.
I, I feel that we do this, eh, even with the Lindsay Street, it would be helpful if we had a little bit more. Information before we sat down, I don't know how the other counselors feel about making a decision or voting on something. That we have the problem we're trying to solve, the alternatives to solve it. And what, you know, who's impacted by each of the decisions, right, because we're missing that information. And then, um, I had come up with a rough template for something like that, like a one pager. That we put in front of each other, if there's a motion to say, okay, this is what I'm asking. Here's what we've considered, whether it's government services or just me as an individual, here's the pros and cons, weigh it out. And then let everybody vote on that, right now, there's too much on the table, I think, that we're talking about, that is just very difficult. To figure out what it is exactly is going on.
Yeah.
So is that, does that seem reasonable?
One of the things I will have to say, follow up. Follow up council meeting that, in, in the resolving of issues, sometimes issues are, you know, quick answer. And sometimes they take years to resolve issues, so the, so the process, if I think makes sense, then, I mean, the others, the other reality of this is. Having been on the council for a while, at times we'd have people who've been on the council for a long, long time, so they understand. Right now, a lot of you all are very new, and because you're new, you don't know the procedures, you don't know the the plan. And and again, as in terms of establishing new ones, that's totally fine, but that. Experience at the moment, there's kind of an experience factor in that sense. And and what I mean is. For two or three years, you know, you have a kind of general disclaimer, you don't do it that way, but that comes with something.
Well, I think, you know, generally, if it ain't broke, why are we fixing it, right? So that's the kinds of things I'm putting out too. I think it's good to look at things holistically. Uh and the other thing is, we really need to be more respectful with people. We really do. This is just not acceptable. As public officials.
But I'll go back to the idea of precedent, just because precedent doesn't precedent, doesn't mean you gotta do it the same way all the time.
That's true, but then we can vote to change it, as long as we have a proposal bill on the table. And I'm happy to work with you on that, to put something on paper, to say, here's the pros and cons. But that's just note on your notes, right? What I'm talking about is something a little bit more formal. Let me see if I can find it, because I started to draft it up. Yeah, here. Is it legal to pass this out in formals? So it's just a, it's just a draft of something I'm considering of. Of ways that we could put something, can you pass that down to these guys? To have some kind of decision request form, right? This is for big decisions like what you're talking about. What's the problem statement? And I started to work on Lindsay Street as an example, because I was a little bit confused on what we were act- what you were actually asking. So what's some of the background? What are the objectives, right? The objectives are, is it to make it a safer walking community? It's to solve a parking problem. That that background wasn't in that discussion. Then what are the alternatives? Let's say there are two. Uh pros and cons, and then a decision recommendation. So Bill, for example, on this Lindsay Street, if there is an alternative, and I guess there is, about putting up new parking signs and this and that. As long as we know who's impacted and that discussions have been made, then the vote becomes really easy. And Javier, your job becomes easy. Could you just take the vote? It's already filled out on the form and it becomes a similar. Yeah, I choose it as an example. This is not for Lindsay Street, but it's in general. This is the type of information that I need, especially since I'm new, to say, okay. In order to make an informed vote, I need some background on what you're actually asking, right? So and I I think any of us would think it's reasonable to ask for that. And a one-pager with just some brief notes and bullets and things like that would really be helpful.
I like it, it's kind of an organized way of taking pros and cons.
So if we're gonna do that, then maybe we can take something like this or find something else. I don't care. I have no. No rights to ownership over this. It was just my own thoughts, but we can practice it on the committees, right? And bring a draft here, and then ask everybody to review it, and then discuss the alternatives. And then vote on what the option might be.
The table in the new discussion.
So Bill, do you want me to work on something like this with you? And then we can either talk next work session or join the. It doesn't matter. You tell me how to work with, right? Doesn't matter.
Well, uh.
Whoever you have confidence in.
As far as the Lindsay Street, but we we also discussed the the service committees too, uh so that we find.
For Lindsay Street, only because we, you know, you have a sense of all the background and all the information already. So it should be easy to fill out, but I think this sort of just going around and running around isn't. Isn't necessarily productive, right? And it also, I think for each of us, forces us to acknowledge that we've done our due diligence. So for example, in the Lindsay Street, has the business involved been, you know, have have we met with them, right? What were their comments? There's a residence, there's a business impacted, what? Right, but we don't know that, right? That's in your head.
There's a need for some sort of.
Well, do you think that's kind of a function of the work session as well, that was to get that stuff kind of aired out?
But if they bring that background to the work session, then we don't have to hash through that at the work session, right? I mean, we have a framework to ask our questions. That's all I'm saying. We can do it all together, or we can have it sort of succinctly put in front of us as something to react. That's that's my thing, but you guys don't have to. No, we don't have to do it that way, but I think we need something more than what we're doing right now.
And uh and actually Matt helped develop uh months ago, and I think it's. We got it pretty much circulated. I was gonna show that, but.
That's okay, and you can share. I'm just talking about in general.
Right, right.
It would be helpful for new people like myself to have some background.
So we'll catch you back, continue that for a while. Um. I mean, we could always. Maybe authorize the ones that appear now, because he's not officially on A R D. But maybe the idea of having a backup, but I don't know if you want to go with it.
But we should spell out what is the role of the alternate. You know, this is when when I talked about um committee liaisons. There's that, and we talked about it a little bit before, I think, is. There's a benefit to having someone in the seat that has a lot of experience. And there's also a benefit of having someone new, and new ideas flow in. And it would be nice to see if we can get that balance of potentially leaving someone like a Dan. Who has a lot of experience, who has a relationship, but also give an opportunity for somebody to be an alternate, to train. Into that and start becoming familiar with the issues and this and that. I don't think that's. That's unreasonable, right? And I think that would give us a good balance. And for any of us. If you're leaving a committee, if you're leaving town and going on vacation, then the world doesn't have to stop if you're not there, right? You have an alternate. So these are reasonable things, but let's codify them and put them in a proposal in total. And then we can look at it in total. All right.
Since you have the floor, why don't you go on to strategy?
Oh, okay, so you all saw the strategy document, right? Any comments, thoughts? Did I capture things effectively? I did go, as Dan said, I did brief the um. Planning Commission, I think it was pretty well received. Uh we have dates tentatively, and I'm meeting with Lisa tomorrow morning. But we have dates for uh April fourteenth, which is just the Planning Commission. So I offered to do a a three session just with the Planning Commission. And then the twenty first and tentatively. We haven't decided yet. I'll I'll give it, it will be. Yeah, and so we talked about these not being Saturday sessions, but about these being weeknights, probably two hours. You know, six to eight or something like that. Um but the twenty first and the fifth. Were dates that were put out that the Planning Commission members were potentially available. That would be a joint session with council, so I'd like you to look at your calendars, please, and see if those dates are available. Can you get back to me? Uh April twenty first and May fifth.
Uh yeah, pretty flexible schedule, so let me know.
Right, so it would be two hours in the evening, and basically what we would do is take the strategic plan. We have a mission, we have a vision, we have our SWOT analysis, we have our list of stakeholders. Um one question that did come up that I think we should resolve jointly is on the um. The definition of, what was it? Javier, do you remember? Sustainable growth, sustainable growth, right? I have actually heard sustainable growth more in a corporate context. I'm seeing more in the literature about smart growth in terms of the town context. So we might want to think about revising that to say smart growth and defining very specifically what we mean. If we talk about sustainable growth, what does that mean? There's all kinds of things that would float around, right? So we can change it to smart growth, we can leave it as sustainable growth, but I'd like to take that discussion on jointly. Okay, and then um go through goals and objectives. We talked about some things here, sometimes that we'd like to get accomplished as a council. Whether that's town maintenance, whether that's uh financial or fiduciary responsibility. I'd like to sort of codify that and get the Planning Commission, because some of that has uh. Uh their their input into it. Um Bill, one of the Planning Commission members had talked about better communication. Between the town council and the Planning Commission. So there's a need, you know, we've talked about it here at this council level. But there seems to be a needed desire at the Planning Commission level too. So how do we achieve that? That could be one of our goals, right? So these are the things that I'd like to take further into a work plan to see if we can actually get some things done. And um government services should potentially think about that, that all of the other counselors and committees. Um have input into that discussion, okay? So any other thoughts or notes about the um? The other thing that came out on the uh the business of the town council, who we do things for. I think there was a uh stakeholder list in here somewhere. Oh, yeah, one of the things um and we talked about, I think. Maybe even Scott's brought this up about having, you know, making sure we're covering the businesses and answering for the businesses. We've talked about the nuance between the Chamber of Commerce and Town Council. I think some, you know, roles and responsibilities and handshaking there might be worth a discussion, okay? And then Chief, just just for you briefly before you leave is um. Some of the uh business owners in the newsletter had a quote about search and about preparing exchange. One of the questions I was getting from the business owners is how they get alerted. Let's say it's the middle of the night and town is going to be flooded and their business luckily might get flooded up. How do they get alerted? I didn't know the answer to that question. I don't know if you do, but it might be something that we can work out. Siren on the pump house. Well, don't forget, these business owners don't all live in town, right? So if they're in Buckingham or if they're in Levanna, we have to have a way to reach them. So it might be something to put on on public safety radar. I don't know if it's in the plan and how we keep that up. This is one of those cross things, right? The the Chamber of Commerce probably has a list of all businesses. We decided not to keep that up on the website. Because they have a better insight into that than we do. And so um how do we alert them if something happens? So that's kind of one of those questions of where the Chamber of Commerce and Town Council work over.
I feel like it would be important to let them know. But at the same time, when that pump siren goes off, what that's telling you is. They're they're already, you know, I mean, what would they, there's not, and and we should let them know. But there's not a whole lot they would be able to do. They can't come in, they're already out. And if they did come in, if it's gonna flood.
I don't know. I think it's something to talk over with the business owners on a, you know. It's not just flood. It could be, you know, that's an example of a natural disaster. We talked about. What was that? We approved the hazard mitigation plan, right? Um there's uh that covered natural disasters. East Palestine was not a natural disaster, right? That was hazmat. So there are other things that might warrant them coming in, right? So we just have to look at those scenarios. We haven't really done that. Anyway, the only thing I I wanted to point out is the question of the business owners. Um that should appear somewhere in the strategy, and we do have an overlap with um with the Chamber of Commerce on it. So uh anything else? We got the dates, we got?
I could raise just one scheduling point.
Yes, sir.
You may be looking at another special meeting for your recruiting interviews. And that could get pretty tight with scheduling both your regular meeting next week and multiple special meetings. So maybe the May fifth is better for that reason.
Yeah, well, we'll need two sessions, so maybe we'll just put those out in May in general. I'll talk to Lisa about that. They're supposed to be just with the Planning Commission, but I haven't heard from Lisa on whether that's actually on or not. Given that I won't talk to her until Tuesday, I have a feeling it might not happen.
They did not call anything when they met last week. They were, they had the twenty first and the fifth available, but not before.
Well, she had talked about this Friday the fourteenth for just the Planning Commission, just to get them all on the same.
They have not given notices that, as yet.
No, not that I know of, right? I'm not on their mailing list or anything. Oh, I don't, oh yeah, I don't know about that. No, is that three days now?
Y- yes, so Chair Caltabiano could call it tomorrow, if if they were able to get everybody together.
And then you can post it.
Yeah.
And then have it on Friday.
All right, let's talk about uh Thorny Valley Street.
Oh, Sir, would you like to join us? Thank you for your patience this evening.
Well, I couldn't fall asleep. Okay, um I've owned these two parcels, side by side, each is thirty feet wide. Uh frontage on Valley Street. Hi, I mean, I'm Gina. Alex, I'm Dean. They're a hundred and fifty feet deep, side by side. Well, obviously, the one that is next to the Stinson House is landlocked. It's only got the frontage on the thirty feet. Uh what we're talking about tonight is rezoning that parcel, the vacant parcel. Um as commercial. What you've already probably noticed is that I've divided it up with fencing in a different configuration. And that was, I was, since last fall, I've been working with Matt about dividing that property into two parcels. So in other words, instead of having three uh two commercial lots, there would be three commercial lots. But what what we have to do first apparently is vote to have lot one twenty one commercial.
Right, it's residential there?
It's it's so residential right now, just so you know. I have the old survey. You can pass this around. Each one of these, this is the line, it's just this. Uh each one is thirty by a hundred and fifty. And but you can see here, it's totally landlocked, so there's no use if somebody put a building on the front of. And I would assume it would be the front of the lot, that whole back portion would be wasted because it's it's landlocked between the Stinson garage. Well, I'm calling it Stinson Garage, it's Oliver Kootner's property, and my residential lot. In nineteen ninety eight, when I took over the, I took over both uh parcels. We rezoned the building lot as commercial, because I had my business in there. And in two thousand and three, when I closed the business, we reverted it to commercial, because there was no point. I'm I'm living in the entire building. It is so.
You converted back to residential?
Only, and I did not find this out for thirteen years, that commercial tax, tax on commercial property is double what it is for residential. So for thirteen years, I paid double taxes, and I didn't need to. Now, the corollary to that is that the government, any government, I IRS, whatever, can go back on us for seven years. But we can only go back on them for three. So I paid in excess of ten thousand dollars in excess taxes all that time. But um point being, we need to change the zoning on the vacant lot. So it's commercial, so that I can put them up for sale as commercial properties. And we've. I don't know if you want to pass this around and show the original. These are the original two lots. And then this is, I think he's been given this already. There's a small, I can't do this without. It's now divided into this lot and an L-shaped lot, and then the back lot.
Okay.
Does that make sense? That's that's what the fencing is dividing it into. So that's a small lot. Here, I've got a hand drawn one that. That's that's what the fencing is dividing it into. So that's a small lot. Here, I've got a handwritten one that's probably easier to read. That's easier, isn't it?
And this is what it currently is?
That's what it's gonna, that's what it's set up to be, but. This is the original. And I did bring this over, instead of thirty feet each on the frontage, I've increased thirty-three on the one and twenty-seven on the smaller one. Mainly because I set up the fencing so that you can come in here and put the garbage in there from both of these. It'll be fenced in. Just like it is across the street with the batteau.
So this is the configuration now, or this is what you want?
That's the way the fencing is set up, and I've had it surveyed that way, right?
Okay, so you want commercial on the back and commercial on this little parcel?
And the residential now is actually commercial.
Right, so you want it to change back to residential?
The the underlying zoning for these would be commercial all the way through. What we have now is one lot that's commercial and another that's residential. The subdivision plan meets the town's goals for small-scale business development. But we have a minimum lot size in residential. We do not have a minimum lot size on commercial, and there are some tiny commercial buildings in town, like.
Directly across the street.
But what could you do with a tiny little lot like this seven hundred and fifty-six square feet? Isn't there setbacks? Aren't there setbacks?
Commercial has zero setbacks, for for exactly this reason, that you can build right up to the sidewalk. And for an ice cream stand, that's good. And you can abut the. Adjoining building, and as long as there's room to stick a trash can on the side, it works. So you have precedent at buildings like this one. Or this. For a shop. Which we have found very helpful for small-scale businesses to get started. They they need a small split with space. So when Ms. Radley proposed the idea, my first reaction was to look at our zoning map. Here and and say. That's fine. This whole block is zoned commercial. You're good, go ahead. And with a longer history in town, Ms. Radley pointed out, no, one of the lots was never rezoned. And we had to consult the minutes and confirm that was correct. Years ago, the town council did rezone the one lot where the house is. I think because of turnover, never acted on the second lot, and so it dropped. So I can't sign off on her subdivision unless both lots are commercial. That's why, and and that's why I bring it forward, because I feel that our map, our zoning map is in error. It's showing one of these lots as commercial and giving wrong information to her when. The facts of the previous council voting record are, it's still downtown residential. So I'm I'm bringing this forward as a map correction. Either we act to rezone it and verify the map. Or you deny this rezoning request and I'll color the map to. Create what we actually have. But this isn't done just as a matter of map cleanup. Uh, it's it's because she has a redevelopment plan for the property.
And it was always part of the comprehensive plan that these be commercial.
Ye- yes, that. That mix of land uses on Valley Street as our central business district such as it is. And a fine-grained mix of uses, what we described. There should be different sizes and types of uses. Uh, and if if anywhere in town, those uses are sort of gonna be piled up on top of each other, this is the place to do it.
Are there any water sewer, you know, issues with that small front lot? Or can you utilize the entire space?
The sewer access is on the side, right next to the Stinson House, right inside the fencing. The, I will point out, the building across the street is a hundred and seventy-six square feet. So I mean, you could put a little, a larger building on the on the property. On that frontage lot.
Hundred and seventy-six.
Square feet, that's how small it is.
That is tiny.
Planning Commission did recommend denial of this request, but the reason they gave was a lack of clear information about what was going to be done. So the kinds of survey drawings and mockups and description of how the info might occur was not information the planning commission had when I noted.
Another question I have. What is the feasibility that that back lot is actually utilized as commercial?
It's directly across the street from New Airbnb. And so my, I would assume that somebody would wanna do a similar thing because it's quieter back there, or in our gallery or something like that.
There's also some parking issues that have been.
It's the same slope as what comes from Tim's house down to the Airbnb. It's the same thing. It could be tiered.
I I think you would be probably limited to the. This southeastern corner of it to avoid that slope for that reason. Again, another small building. I think you have good precedent for that with the sort of Carriage House building at Stinson and the Telephone Exchange. And to kind of imagine three small buildings in line could be feasible. And we have successful renovation at the Telephone Exchange. I think the precedent for it being feasible.
And you have to park on that lot too, right?
No, sir, the. Yeah, the. Those lots do not have onsite parking requirements. Um, it would be challenging to build parking in there, so you might, you'd be limited what could be done, but they would be using public parking elsewhere on in town. Yeah. Yeah, not not every commercial property in town has a parking lot.
So.
Do you have?
Yeah.
How would you enforce that?
No, I think there's, there's a.
I say that apartment. Airbnbs.
No, no, sir. All of the, all of the parking requirements in the historic commercial properties, fronting Valley and Main are waived. Um, none of these uses, restaurants, barber shops, would be feasible if we required onsite parking. Per our ordinance. You you'd be looking at. You know, the the batteau would need to have a parking lot with thirty spaces. They're not waived. The the the. The waiver from off-street commercial parking, which exists for all all businesses on Valley and Main within the historic district. Does not have an exception for lodgings. So in the, to take the Telephone Exchange example. If there's no, if there's no off-street parking here, the correct place for the guests to park is on the street and walk up. Uh, and that's true for. You know, Chinese takeout customers, they park anywhere on the street. That that property doesn't have a parking lot. No, sir.
And I think I'm still confused on why you want the back to be commercial instead of just a separate residential lot.
I couldn't get enough score footage for it. It has to be minimum four thousand square feet. Matt said he'd like forty-four hundred, and I couldn't squeeze it unless I took down my garage.
Okay.
My initial thought was to just divide them horizontally instead of vertically. But the garage was in the way.
Yeah, that's four thousand foot line might be here and would take out the garage.
Through the garage.
And can we not get a, a special use for that to be?
You have, you have a variance route through the architectural review board. Any. Required standard in the zoning ordinance can be waived by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So if you, if you felt, if you wanted a house lot there, wanted to keep it residential, but grant a variance, that would be the path to go.
And then you'd have your setbacks and everything else.
Setbacks for a house to kick in.
I think, well, again, we're gonna buy it commercially, I think, is. I, my only, I'm only bringing that up is what would be more valuable to yourself and to the town as well. I think a residential lot would be nice. I also. Think a commercial lot would be hard to get somebody to.
Bigger than my Kaiser House.
That's the kind of structure you would get. And then. If you wanted to grant a residential use on that lot, you could do that by special use permit. Someone said, you know, I built this little thing and I want an apartment there. You can approve that.
Would that interest you at all? Or would you like to even?
It's up to whoever buys it. I would prefer that it be zoned commercial. And then if somebody buys it and wants to go through the process, you know, to get a variance, and that, that's up to that person. I've got enough, as as living there, I've got enough buffer now with my fence and the garage to have some privacy, you know, either way. Eventually, when I sell the building, hopefully in five years or so, it would revert to commercial. With an apartment upstairs, so mixed use.
Yeah, it's, it is a little bit of a tricky decision because you don't know the future uses there. It's speculative. Uh, and once that.
If there were already plans in place and you have somebody coming forward to say, I'm interested in the property, I wanna put. An air, a little Airbnb there or something.
Right.
It's a harder decision to make, I think, when you have no insight into what.
Ridiculous to have one little lot on the busy town street. It's everything else is commercial and one residential. Who is gonna build something a little bit? It's primary. Use should be commercial.
Exactly.
It's like every other lot on Valley Street.
You, you do get a bit of control in this use list in commercial, that the. The way this use list is drawn is is to have the byright uses be less of a nuisance. And the special use permit that you vote on again goes to the ones that create more of an impact. So if those tiny buildings had an antique shop, a florist, a cheese shop, there's no vote there. When it gets down to. The. This is your special use, uh, your special use permit list is here. Lodgings. Gas station, laundromat with higher traffic.
Yeah.
Um, that's when it comes back to you for another vote. And the apartments and boarding houses are there. So it's not car wash, but it is less controlled and. You know. Taylor. Beauty shop. Boutique retail, I think that's.
So those things would be allowed.
Those are by right, yeah. And I, and those are the ones we have precedent for, of the tiny spaces, your, your, your florist and. Yeah, the first iteration of batteau was a wine shop that was not much more than a closet.
Right.
And it grew.
And there wasn't florist in what, and then an ice cream shop across the street.
Yeah, well, there, I mean, there is precedence and the world is going to small, right? Between tiny homes and tiny businesses because things are so expensive. So I think that makes sense, but.
I'd say it's only right to rectify wrong that was done thirty years ago. If somebody dropped the ball. Why wouldn't they not? Rezone the whole thing commercial, why wouldn't they just leave part of it as residential?
Well, I I'm actually grateful, Ron, because I would have been paying double taxes on a big piece of property for twenty-six years. So. I'm grateful in that respect, but now that we've, I've divided it up and I tried to do this with the town in mind. Sincerely, I'm trying to give you three, three commercial properties.
A bunch of hoops for a mistake that the council and the ladies made.
And it just disappears from the agenda. It's on. Half of it is acted at one meeting and then it never shows up again. I don't know why it wasn't acted on.
One of the things I will say on behalf of this is, I've seen this before, not your situation, but. Where we, at the council, not this council, but years ago, somebody didn't finish something, so to go remind us, whatever we do in the future, we will finish.
That's a good one.
Yeah, so we, we don't leave something undone.
Well, the way I've guided it, these two new parcels have to be commercial because they're under the four thousand feet. So like I said, somebody, it may be me who decides to build on the back lot and live in a smaller house, then I would go for a variance. But part of the Lindsay Street problem is that somebody's gotta be able to come up there and not be obstructed when there, if there's building going on in that. Behind my garage. And that's why we need no parking up there.
It's the other matter.
Yeah.
You have to get those approved by, you know, a different zone code than that. I mean, just because you have some bets, is it re-zoned, it's three different places.
It's re-surveyed, so instead of two lots, it's three lots.
So it's been, has been approved by.
No.
No, sir. I, I can't, um, this is a draft survey. It could, but this, this survey is not complete yet. Um, the the signing authority on the survey to legally create the lots is is me, your zoning administrator. But I can't do this until I see zoning alignment. So right now, the subdivision is illegal.
Okay.
And and so she proposes to fix that. Or or hold them as multiple parcels.
It was rezoned at the beginning of the year. Every, excuse me, re-surveyed at the beginning of the year, so I've been waiting. And then we had this snafu that we had to get cleared up about the one parcel being rezoned commercial from years before. So if you can vote to do that, I'd really appreciate it. And then Kat can sign off and my surveyor can record everything. And then I can get them listed. And we'll see what happens.
Any other questions from Ms. Radle? See what we can do.
Okay, appreciate it. I have two other sheets of paper that I passed down. The one, does anybody know where they went?
Mr. Heisman, would you like to take up that access memo issue now?
Access.
Yeah.
This is what the government serves. Trouble with and. And the chief on this too, but basically that can read.
Right.
Um, the town government. Oh, you got it? Yeah. There you go. So one and two is a main day. One and two, pretty, pretty straightforward, that this is a street. And you know, and it may be developed with some stuff or something in the future, basically that. I would, I I go down that all the time and I went down to the public speed today and there's still a farmer park there.
At the end of that slope.
The top of that street and and we talked about that, you know, the server and the chief and I and Matt went. Matthew went, walked today again. And he suggested, or we suggested that we put one park, no parking sign up there near the Airbnb. And that was solid, but he can't get tickets unless we agree that this is a street and you can't park it and. There's been problems from all the owners and the included, that if somebody parks there. It, uh, it's a problem because you can't, it's only one way. You can't get in and out. And the Airbnb has designated parking. On the side and there might be another Airbnb. And those, those are all designated parks. So the idea is that nobody should park on the street. That's what it is. And the V person is concerned about that too, because sometimes they have a delivery there and they're not supposed to, but.
But didn't your revision say something about every limit loading there too?
No, no, we just got rid of that. I just, we just had, uh, got rid of the loading and that doesn't seem to be a problem unless it's a.
And this is a street, it's a designated.
And they can load there, but they're not supposed to, but you know, the, the chief, you know, he'd overlook it for, you know, it's for, you know, a couple of things. But you can't park there, that Airbnb parks there the whole night sometimes. And that's the problem. Is that right?
Or an entire week.
Or an entire week, yeah. Actually, Dina might be able to bring it forward. She was one of the ones who had complaints as well as Kimberly. And so the Airbnb is really at fault for anything. And she has a garage there, they're parked there, she can't get up and around there, you know, that's a problem.
So my, my, one of my questions was, why is it a street and not an alley? And I don't wanna be labor.
And that hill, that little path is a street.
It goes.
It goes up that hill, that's still Lindsay Street.
But the street to me implies vehicular traffic and parking. Alley says to me. It's just an access, but it's Lindsay Street.
In your head, it looks like.
That's not what I'm saying. I say, is there a larger issue to be had here that shouldn't be a street, should be a designated Lindsay Alley? Right, that's all I'm asking.
One of the things we probably, what you just said, so if you look back at the history of the town, the note by the seventeen forty-four. You'll see on lots of different maps, streets that either don't exist anymore or streets that dead end. So your questions are really good. So your questions are really good and Mary's point is also good. So there's streets that really. Do they bear the term street or?
Should we rename?
Yeah, just only because, again, if you go back, go back to huh seventeen forty four, all those different maps showed it, but then. And some of them, you know, like Blair, we're out of it, all those, I'm sorry, all the ones that's up there.
Yeah.
The streets are all where you look to.
Yeah.
Yes, they're residual. So this is a good question.
Well, and the thing that I had a question, so for Jack who's doing like maps and when visitors come into town.
Does show that.
The old tavern.
Right. Let me see if there's parking down this street. There's no street, right? I don't have a huge, I can prove this no. Well, that's what I'm thinking is a town owned property. Right? And so I would think we do have the authority to redesignate it as an alley, which has inherently. Uh a connotation of no parking in the alley. It's. That's my only thinking and I just want to make sure we have all of the. All of the alternatives here and that we, you know, we understand because that is an option.
Yeah.
I mean, you might not know that there is no parking sign on either side of the Lindsay. But nobody pays attention. I went to meet the other day and I will mention, uh well, I might as well. Kimberly's parents park in the middle of Lindsay Street and I cannot go up, they park and go in. And there's some places, why do times it does to me? And I get out of my garage and I go, I'm coming home. So we just need enforcement. Uh if you go down in the I T book, there's a sign that says, no parking on the side.
That's the problem. And the chief of that, if we say this is no parking, then you get a ticket. If we don't have a a a policy, then you know, keep your warnings instead of.
But the signs have been up and I've called before, I mean, twenty five years of this. And what happens is somebody gets a warning, but I've had to remake appointments because I couldn't get out of the of. And I will have in the eye of the pictures of nineteen fifty and that was a straight one all the way through. You can see the old fashioned cars there. But this was a location, you know, it just. Me, you know, how even my backyard is slow down, soil is coming down and now it doesn't go through.
It's not, I mean, it's not a street in the conventional sense.
So we talk about enforcement, I've talked to a number of the uh the folks that utilize this talent right here. And I probably get a different response from depending on which person I talk to, well, I may do permission by this person. From the town, from council, uh there is no way with all of these different. Stories that are being put out there to the police department. That I can charge someone that. So you've got two signs right there at the two corners coming off Valley Street, but you absolutely have nothing going back the rest of the street. So if a person is public up soon and it's just there on a few corners and.
Yeah.
In the very back of there.
Yeah.
That's when, that's when we talk about this three months. When we talk about expectations and being clear on what we expect our folks to do. Council. It's your decision to make. Do we make it? No parking is a memo. I've seen a memo come through. It's a fifteen minute loading. I think it's legitimate to charge people. If we can come to a consensus about what's supposed to be done.
Well, and I think that you you bring up a good point, Chief, is. You could say. I'm all for the no parking. Okay, I just want to be clear about that. But the loading and unloading, I don't know. What Kimberly and the Beats are actually using that for. You could limit loading and unloading between. Eleven and three, right?
Yeah. And I think you gotta say no, and if something happens, you can overlook it a little bit.
Okay, then we're just impacting a business our way.
They can't park in front?
I don't know. Is it, is there a fire hydrant? I think there's a hydrant.
Oh, that's when we were discussing parking and whether or not to take, I mean, this is going back more than a year. We were just pressing. The two hour party. And Kimberly came for us and said, it's not fair that. The Bateau has had parking and I don't, you know, I have. You know, people who need to park right in front of our building and we gave them the option of. Why don't we make this a loading zone? That way, if somebody comes to your. Business, they can park right there. Like i- i- this is a loading zone only in front of your business. So they can park right there and get their their hives put in or your trucks can come and empty it out and no one will park there. It will be a loading zone only in front of your business. And she said, no. You know, I I mean, I feel like that was the best solution.
Absolutely.
My understanding is that they have a rule here was that Lindsay Street would never be blocked. It's a fire ingress and egress. And not going to be here ever.
That's that's what this.
That is true.
You know, chief might ask discretion or something. But you're right, they shouldn't do.
But there should be clarity here, right? It's either, you know, no parking, no loading, right? You can't say, well, I'll allow it sometimes or not sometimes.
And we offered this once before and we said, no, we are going to enforce no loading. Lindsay Street, are you sure you don't want to make a park mistake instead of your loading a loaders?
The only problem with that is do we have other businesses on Main Street that don't have access? And would want the same leverage, right? And then we've got Main Street just loading zone.
Put orange cones out.
Exactly.
Taking up three parking spaces.
It's. Different with hers though, because they need cheese. They don't have a loading zone, their their restaurant truck comes up and these are professionals, you know what I mean? If I was a customer looking for a beehive. You know, I'm not so worried about her trucks coming to load and unload. It was more the customer. If they're parking behind Victory Hall or whatever and lugging these great big heavy things and they don't know how to get it to their car and everything else. She could lose business. Professional truck drivers, like I'm not worried about it, you know, Nietzsche's. Truck driver has to go across the street with darling and you know that's.
I was, as I took a lot away from the conversation and came back, one of the things I would say is. Tense moments for you did tonight and we have at other times, but. In being on the council, it's pretty common that we're talking about parking. So it seems normal. And it's normal that it's actually trick, like it's not an easy answer to what we do. And that's why. We talk about it now, five years ago and eight years ago, it's like a trick, but it's just, it's normal. I was gonna say to you, like, thank goodness we're talking about parking.
Can I say something? And that is, I didn't know that was a street. Been here for twenty years. Um because there's no street sign right there.
We talked about that.
That there is.
But we talked about having.
Now on the other side. I I'm almost sure I.
And that's what I would kind of, every time that I've been a part of this conversation, it's. Gets into fairness and kind of opens a can of worms and seems like we're skipping an easy solution. I don't know if that is, but I think we're skipping an easy solution. Is putting another parking sign towards the back. Gonna be a vast fix for this and then we can break into a conversation because I don't want, you know, I don't want our police department to be used as. The vendetta department between homeowners and businesses and, you know.
And that's what it comes to. No, no.
Is a fire hazard. Shouldn't touch it.
Some of the culprits are been told repeatedly that there's no parking there and so two more with no parking. So if you went back, you said really, I think. Right behind Airbnb building. We'll cover about that. We can have uh the utilities those come in, make sure we can put a sign back there. Put one sign, it covers just past Airbnb all the way down. Endless way and you can see it coming up the hill, no parking, it makes it crystal clear.
Have a car dollar and force it with her.
The the guest, guest check in instructions. She 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 knows the the most recent, the most recent thing from them because they have active construction on the other building. It's got litter and debris in the back lot and you wouldn't want a guest vehicle to get a flat tire from your fingernails. So the most recent thing she said was, it's it's easier. For her to put all of her traffic back in here after this project is finished.
One of the suggestions was she came up that that Airbnb should should have that office building somehow. A sign saying Airbnb parking this way. So that they know and she would put that real easy and that would solve it too. Just say, hey, this is where you park. She has a two places back there.
Yeah.
For that.
Um, my other question with that Airbnb is. That archway, I know we discussed it at one point, but is that encouraging on?
It does.
Because that is the liability for the town, because it is not anchored in there. It's just sort of placed in there. And all you need is somebody coming in to party at Spacewalk for the weekend and Airbnb. To, you know, lean on it too hard, pull it down, you know. It's in there pretty loose.
We can, we can give, it's it's town property. We can give permission for aesthetic improvements. Or if we don't think they're well done and don't like them, we can have them removed.
I just wonder if it's.
Okay, let's don't spend the rest of the night on Lindsay Street. Two new signs, no parking, enforce no parking, and that's that. No, we don't have to vote on anything. We say, put two new part, no parking signs to people understand there's no parking all the way to the end and enforce no parking rule.
That is.
Not as easy as we can make it.
That's it.
One parking sign.
At the top.
And I'll, I'll refresh the two one hours.
Alright.
I will send that memo. I'll do it.
Alright, item three D. We've got a lot of stuff left here to do and it's already nine o'clock, so let's get going here. But is anything else you need to tell us about version?
You um you have your public hearing on the budget uh next week. That's duly noticed. Um I gave some additional outreach to the restaurant owners and the folks who do accounting for restaurants because they're the ones affected by the tax increase. I'm still here. The the feedback was less severe than I thought it would be. Um one expressed a bit of concern but not rage about impact to their business and another. Didn't hate the idea, but just gave us caution that it might not bring in as much revenue as we thought it would. So be conservative as that rate goes higher. Maybe people will start to change their behavior. So let's be cautious about what it really brings, which I think is fair, but.
And we can always bring it down.
Yes, compared to the last time that council took this up in twenty nineteen, this response is less severe. It seems to me like business owners understand that everyone's cost of business is higher and that's come around for us too. Government services, in particular Mister Heisen, have studied some of the line items. So you you had a proposal on um.
Said those, I don't think everybody saw this, but they came late. Did you guys see those?
No, I can send it back to you, sir. Please take it away.
Okay. But uh I knew everybody when I said that, but those were uh suggestions from the government service about. Uh some extra expenses that we need and uh. One one was for for uh possibly getting a uh a rest a restroom at the bank. That was twenty five thousand. The other was to have actually more money for uh the uh. Now basis square. Because I think that town's valid, it probably needs about ten thousand because there's a lot of issues with that and that's a worse attraction. Uh and then the other other one, I can't remember all, maybe for one or three months, but uh we talked about having better uh audio visual. System for uh for people who zoom. And everybody had their own speaker and and a better way of hearing and seeing things because I've heard several people saying, I can't. Your receiver's going on at the meeting. You're turning that that thing all the time and and then we're putting these like speakers there, so. There was some extra things for those that we, and of course we recommend uh getting one of the DMV. Uh and a few other things, but uh those are all in the. The recent email that Matt sent out there was. Yeah, I mean, I don't think I have them all here. I'd like that some of them are. Yeah, just one thing I'm gonna say that you make a good point. This. The Zoom world is new, you know, with post COVID or with COVID and it is worth thinking about, you know, to what level do you want to have the right. View for people to have. So you know, that is, that's a good point. We haven't really talked about it. We adapted to this.
It doesn't work very well. So I think it's been on a little.
I got the the what we talked about, dude, I can read it. This is this is a budget, I make that up, the minutes that it's got put out. Uh but uh. Uh we recommend closing the uh DMV, save fifty five thousand dollars. Additional money to now base it for maintenance replacements and selling exhibits. Uh bank key, bank key, look into a composite bathroom for the women. Uh upgrade the audio visual equipment. Uh and the extra money can be kept as surplus. And one of the things we talked about is having not a balance list, but have a surplus budget of ten percent say. So that next year, we don't run into a problem and if we have extra money, we can use it for. You know, bonuses or for, you know, we want to donate it to something or be street cleaning.
Also help us with the carryover on taxes.
Uh and I think, let me see, was there anything else? That was, well, they mentioned about how the internet expense uh and the other thing is inflation, you know. We don't, you know, we're down again, yeah, you know, we we need to have, make sure we're not in the same situation like we did last last time. Anyway. That was some of the things that uh you said.
I have something that everybody might shoot down or hate me for. Um. I will preface it with saying that I did not realize. How much money was taken from the uh police. For this, but like, so for example, is you don't have any money for um. Fourth of July for extra policing for Fourth of July. And that's usually like fifteen hundred to get out of moral pop. I mean, I think we. Then I I happened to notice that one time at the parks, I would love to go through line by line of this budget because. It it's just reinforcing my thought that we have to get rid of the DMV. If that if that's the only place to get the money from, because to to not have extra. Police from the county here for Fourth, Fifth July, have zero dollars allotted for the parks. That like I I know it's balanced, but I don't think it's. I don't think money is allowed to where it should be allotted and I'm. It's a big document.
Thrust, pardon me, the thrust of the government services conversation was if if DMV is removed, it creates a pool of. Net thirty thousand dollars to work with and government services focused on improved capital spending as you described. But maybe there are some operational needs that are more important. So that that could be the focus.
At the budget line by, because like I said, if it hadn't been brought to my attention today, that that fifteen hundred dollars was gone for. Police on Fourth of July, I would not know this, that that fifteen hundred dollars was gone.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the what we, what has been posted is really just a big budget envelope.
It's the bottom line.
Line items are not cast in stone until later on. In the summer.
It's no trouble to switch between a thousand dollars of microphones and a thousand dollars of police overtime.
Okay.
So what we're, what we're approving is. The, the, the number, what, what the amount our budget is.
You, you have until May to approve a budget. And af- after that point, we will, we will lock in the department spending.
But what I'm saying is if we have a public hearing next week and say, this is our proposed budget, budget amount. Once that happens, that is the proposed budget amount, but we can move around. How we set that amount.
Right, we're, we're capped at eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars now, because that's what you advertised. But you have up until your final adoption vote to switch between Capitol Police, I T, what have you.
And I agree, we should go.
I know, which would probably be another special. But. I, I, I think it's important because I, I think.
Okay, buddy.
Well, I have one question that I wrote you back, uh, immediately. And that wasn't, we, we got, I, I looked at the big eyes, which I don't care about if five hundred dollar here and there. Seventy thousand for the municipal building exterior. I was just curious, I don't have heard anything about that, but. What has to happen with the exterior of this building that's seventy thousand dollars? They, uh, is a really, it's a mashup.
It's a solar panel system.
Oh, so that's it? Solar panel? So that's a possibility or is that, that a deal?
It, uh, oh, it's not approved until you go on the budget.
Oh, so the seventy thousand dollars. Okay, so that's what that is. So that's not really, I just said the exterior building. So if we didn't do that, we'd say seven thousand.
Hmm. You didn't do that, you didn't say D M V.
Hmm, well, uh. Not quite, because it's, um. Not something that we have, we don't have to pay out of pocket for. So it, it can use the same USDA funding resource that we use for police vehicles and they strongly support that. So that's one where if you didn't wanna do it, it would come out of spending, but it would also reduce the expected revenue. That's one where you would not have seventy thousand dollars available for something else.
Yeah.
Uh, can't be used for payroll.
Yeah.
Um. The, the other thing to remember from the government services committee discussion, I don't think this made this in there. When you cut the D M V, mostly it removes spending, but it does also remove some revenue. So when you zero out D M V, you don't have fifty-eight thousand dollars available. You have fifty-eight minus twenty-six.
Yeah, last week when I was up there two days, there were lines.
Yeah.
With the.
I know, but we're spending more than we're making.
With any.
But everything was happening. It's been here a couple of years. And everything that they do here can be done online. Everything they do here.
And that's the problem. The D M V was to be online, but.
Yeah.
During COVID. D M V is the one at fault here and not us.
Yeah.
I don't care who's at fault, but I'm saying is we're spending more than.
The bad guys are good. It's a big circle of.
That makes sense. I feel like you're.
And I don't understand why government services doesn't wanna do services for the townspeople like D M V. Let's erase it. Let's go on, move on.
Think our D M V is for the information, we, uh, have a lot.
Let's move on. Buckingham County.
Still discussing that.
We'll discuss.
There is no reason to make any reading and argument. We are allowed to have differing opinions and if my opinion doesn't match yours, I don't deserve to be spoken to. As if I'm an idiot or my ideas don't warrant some kind of consideration. The fact of the matter is, it has been open for years. We are spending more than we are bringing in. And every service that they can buy can be done from your phone. It would be different if they were getting driving. And you can come in and get a photo ID and you all do the same. They're not. I can pay a tax bill online. I can register a car online. Everything that they do can be done online. The library is putting a new position in for somebody to be doing specifically those things. Who, it's mostly spookers who are, are coming here to do it. So instead of coming here, they would go to the library. And have somebody there paid by the county. To handle these things to get all of that done.
Take it away and then you can explain to the citizens why we.
Well, I want to the citizens that it'll go to the library. Don't make.
You may vote on it. For the town also, whether next week, whether to continue the D M V or to. This continues. I think that seems to be the plan we play.
Yeah.
So I think that can be a separate vote, I, I think. And I think it was a great, and it does a great thing, a great endeavor, but it, the reality is, is we have.
We are losing money and we are in no position to lose money.
Okay.
Where no. And generally that, we're losing money and that means that our first line has been the same.
We, we went through all of the D M Vs.
Okay. You're making a point, okay? Thank you for the point.
Let's. Yeah, I think, I think we'll take picture of that and we first on the back.
Let's bring the, uh, Buckingham County community cleanup, please. What is that all about?
Okay, so a community leader in Buckingham, um, approached me. And they have a cleanup effort going on and they wanted to know. So they're cleaning up along Route Twenty in Buckingham. Between April eleventh and April thirtieth or thirty-first. And they wanted to know if Scottsville would join in to clean up on the other side of the bridge and sort of pick a point. Going south of which Scottsville would join in that effort. I have the flyer here. I'm gonna. Take one and pass them around. Um, and I thought it would be a nice community gesture. It's good. Earth Day is coming up. Um, I talked to Alex about it. He did not have a problem with me, you know, pursuing this further. Um, trying to get some volunteers together to do that. Uh, Matt, I've talked to the chief and Matt. About panning out safety gear, vests, gloves, bags. It seems like we do this for various occasions anyway. Um. And so if you, we're gonna pick probably a Saturday. Early and do a couple hours and go.
This is just what.
Far on the Buckingham side, so over the bridge. So I asked if she had a marker she'd like us to get to. She said, anything you can do would be helpful.
It's thick.
And that's what the chief said. On the other side, they're going up. It's. Pretty disgusting. So, um, I just wanna let you all know that this is gonna move forward. It's a volunteer. Thing. I'll pick a date and let you all know. If you can alert your community. Members and get them involved, that would be great.
One, one quick comment would be, and I have profiling's a great idea. I don't know about doing this before, so make sure as we communicate with them that we'll, you know, we'll be interested in the future.
Yeah, okay, that's great. And I think she'd really appreciate that. She has a passion for, she wants. Cleaning roads and cleaning for people coming into town and into Buckingham residents and things, so.
And if you and I want to go talk to one of the minor gentlemen over the, over the river, I think a lot of that stretch is bordering their property. And I think they'd be very willing to let people park on their lands.
Okay.
While we do that. Right side, on the other side.
Great. And then, Mayor, you're gonna talk to the gentleman about that. Okay, Alex, stand. Pardon me?
We're, I don't see where you pick it up at.
Pick what? Uh, we're gonna have, um, available metal given to me and we'll have it here. And, yeah.
We can run our part of it. We have plenty of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. But we really, we really have one.
You're coming.
Well, that's a problem because now that I can't do these things anymore.
Right.
You know, we were supposed to have one on Earth Day, but so we still weren't.
Maybe we should just. Because, and, um.
We know all us.
That, that's going on for a few days and, um. All right.
Which one is it? Which one?
It, it's some big black pickup truck, some like oversized wheels.
I keep loaning me my truck.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go with the, uh, closed session.
Do we have to motion for?
Do you want to read it?
Yeah. Um.
I approve that the council enter a closed meeting as authorized in subsection A of section two dot two. That thirty-seven eleven specifically for the. Discussion and consideration that interviews respective candidates. For the position of founder and administrator.
Well, that's it. There's a second.
I will second.
All in favor?
Hi.
So we're gonna, we're gonna still, uh, uh.
Yeah, we're gonna allow them.
And then just how council.
We're allowing the subcommittee to give their report.
And that's us, yeah.
Do, uh, do you need Mr. Bowling?
Uh, if he wants to sit in, that's where he's welcome to. If not.
Okay.
Somebody go shut the door, please.
Mister, uh, Mister Quick, if you would, uh. Leave the, leave the online room here. It was good to see you this evening. And I will stop our recording.